I think a road gang entered and started...
No, not very. It's poor or something. But anyways, no, but like I want to say that a certain citizen was treating Martinez, and he called me, I can say it about thirty times. And he said, "Well, I'll go out there and train for both myself, and I'll go out there." I said, "Talk to her, I don't know what you're gonna tell her." He said, "But..." He said, "For the next time around, he said, "He's got the tools, he's got a trust, he can save their life, hold the long city council, we'll never train the bullies, two or three can't change their climate." And I didn't want to thank him, because he really got involved. He said, "There's a bunch of us..." He said, "But we're not gonna go to the city council and pitch a fit, but I mean, I would like to see it next year, and I think you promised him that."
I did promise him that, and I actually went yesterday and today to physically look at them. We have to think about how we're going to store them. That's one of the problems, they're not storing them properly because you can measure those lights. Anybody gets those Christmas lights out, if one goes out, you have to sit there and change to keep it all in the circuit. We need to talk about storing and cleaning up our storage area. The secretary has been helping me with that, and contact other entities that store in our facility, so that we can make sure that we have enough space to be able to store them properly, that we need to be able to do that. But some of the wiring just always tell me that those are over, we know for sure they're over a decade old, and so we need to be able to address that. And I think we need to maybe find some additional decorations that we didn't know we had, and we're finding a different storage area. So we're gonna have a program next year to get it up, and we're gonna try to wait till right after Thanksgiving, just to be ready, and we're gonna have a proper approval from Texas Department of Commerce, 2000.
And it's gonna be Christmas when?
I'm sorry?
When is Christmas gonna be for the city?
When is Christmas?
June.
Christmas in July?
Yes, we're gonna start this process in July, and I talked to Martinez about that, because that actually, the mayor likes to remind us, it's Christmas in July, it's a shopping time, but we need to be able to start our Christmas preparations bad, so we can get a little bit of lights and not under the wire come the time to be able to do that. But a lot of this from wiring, and the lights is a little before. And speaking of Christmas, I hope everybody got the invitation to reference to what's gonna happen on the eighteenth, we're having an employee luncheon, so that we can celebrate with the employees and have appreciation time on the eighteenth.
So did we find funds for that, or we're gonna turn it up here next year?
Actually, there were some funds that you all have budgeted in that for employee appreciation, we're using that, but of course, we'll take any donations we can give to the council here.
I didn't hear back from America's mayor, I think the mayor put it together last year, and I think a few councils have put it together, and the mayor, but I don't know what the month I did, so I just needed to know if I had to force some money.
Could you get five hundred, councilman?
Well, we could go... That's one setback from the lottery ticket we received earlier. American Legion poster case has been nice enough to step up and help us with our flags. They replaced those flags, they're working on lighting the area, they had some bulbs replaced, but there are still some lights out that we need to take care of, and we'll have the electrician to give us some prices on that, so that we can properly display our lights. They're also working on contemplating taking over the pavement that you had, the Biden break program, they're contemplating looking at that to see what they can do, but of course, they need to get approval from their board. I believe that we'll have it on the agenda for next week, at your next meeting, to thank them properly for stepping up and doing that, and actually disposing of the flags that we had, and storing them properly, and they have really been a great group and a great supporter of the city of Thorbsville. Last but not least, we have a personal issue that we're going to go to arbitration for in reference to these departments. As those factors come forward, I'll be able to share them with you, but I just wanted to let you know that there's a salary dispute, and we're gonna go ahead and take that to arbitration. The next part of my report is the contractual part, the goals and objectives of updating that, so you can take that and read that at leisure. As a reminder, there is an evaluation process for the city manager, I'll be preparing that for you to do an evaluation coming January. Actually, not three months, it's actually January first, November first, but you have it on January second to do your evaluation confidentially to the legislature. If you have any questions in reference to that, in reference to my report contractual, you can contact me in the office, or do you have any questions of you now?
I do have some questions. I'd like to have clarification on the three part-time utility billing clerks, what will these positions be filling, what will they do?
Okay. The three part-time billing clerks will be working on three different things. One will be HR, human resource, they'll be helping our human resource person, Margaret Hadda, to take care of all the things that we have right now in reference to do that. She's doing our HR for us, that's one. The second will be actually, the utility billing clerk will actually be taking utility billing, being here for lunchtime, so we do not have to close for lunchtime, giving that assistance, and also answering the phone, so we can do that automated. The third person we're gonna have be our contact liaison with the garbage company, with publics. We need to make sure that all of our accounts, our jobs are back and forth, and that one person is actually responsible in conjunction with our controller to regulate those accounts, because that billing is gonna be very, very important, and I believe that's on the agenda for later on today. Our representative Terry has been gracious enough to offer working together, then we have this new person in place, so that when somebody moves out, or somebody moves in, or how we told you there, if there's a question or complaint that you have in reference to your service, we can work through that person, and it would be a greater contact, and that's what their focus will be.
I understand we had a problem here, I guess, next month with the phone system, because I've had to call several offices, and they all just went to...
It was to voicemail. We were having something wrong with the computer that I believe is at the police department that was affecting our phones, we didn't able to do that. But that's one of the things that I get complaints about, is people call, they're getting an automated system, and they want a person, so we'll have more people there to answer the phone. And for the same budgeted amount of that full-time person, we were able to hire three part-time people. So we should not go over budget in that area.
At your second base, Ms. Turner, how's the teamwork across all departments working out?
It's working pretty good. The young ladies up front have been able to move and go forward. The park execs were excited about coming in and meeting staff, they participated in the process, and we're meeting on a weekly basis with different departments, and so we're able to come together. As I'm learning the city of Thorbsville, I have still a lot to learn. You have any questions?
Can I ask you on that tourist and visitors bureau funding, I think it's a good idea on what you have in mind. How does the chamber feel about that?
The chamber feels quite happy about that in reference to the fact that it will definitely be an entity on its own. They tell me that they kept it both separately, and they gave us the budget at that October meeting. They are endorsing and taking it back to their board. But we, my ideas were even further that not only do we need a separation of funding, but we need to have a physical separation, so that clearly people see that there's two different entities as they exist. And so we still have some things to work through in reference to that, and I hope to be reading that to you early in 2014. But the FDC said that they would mind having someone to attend those board meetings, and the chambers said they would have somebody to attend those board meetings. You can select either your someone, staff, or endure a councilman, or endure a representative of a citizen on that FDC board, on that board, because that board is gonna correct you. The money is there, we need to be able to fund it and use the money, but again, the goal for using that wholesale tax, as you all know, is to get heads in the bit, market. And so I think that the biggest thing we have to market is our city itself, but also our community center, as we have gun shows or conventions and things such as that. So we need to have a plan to say, "This is what we need to go market," and be able to market us, because the travel school is destined for...
Do you think having a group of volunteers is the best plan to market the city?
I think it is. I think because people who live here, you know, business people, residents, who live there want to be able to say, "That's how they're marketed." But one of the things that it can fund is a marketing agency, they can buy advertisements, they can actually get onto market, and I think in this day and age, everything can be done on the website. You can really be a virtual tour. Can you imagine that we can come up with a virtual tour for the city of Thorbsville? We have a lot of historical landmarks, a lot of cemeteries that are definitely historical. They tell me that we have more than any other state, in particular, the state of Texas, we have more people from Texas range that came from the city of Thorbsville. I took a tour of the jail museum, and they tell me it's haunted, but they have, but they have a lot of interesting entities, and we should be able to open that and have more activity, other than just when we have people festival. So we want to be able to tie all these things together, the wonderful things that we have is advertise that.
Like a destination city?
I tried to tell you about the G's from the story. I tried to tell you about the story today, he came to discuss some topics. And he wants to do, he wants to have bus tours, he wants people to see, you know, to see the Alamo, and they come out to see the mission, the goat mission.
Manchurian was cameras.
Yes, because I'm being a one of these days here, but we want to be able to have them come out here, we have a lot of that history here, and so we're hoping to do that, to come, so that he can show, we can have a tour, have a destination.
Anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna go on to item number three, new business, the city council may consider, discuss, and/or take action regarding the acceptance of the resignation of council place number one. As per section three point number six vacancies of the Thorbsville city charter. It's Chris, are we willing to put you, if you're in?
Thanks, Mayor. What we're here on this item to do is accept the resignation of the tender by Councilman Jim Miller on November twenty-fifth, 2013. Unfortunately, that fell right before the Thanksgiving holiday, it would have been the second meeting in November, so this is the first regular meeting available at which could have set the resignation. Under the Texas election code, section two zero one dot zero zero one A, it says, "To be effective, the public officer's resignation must be in writing and signed by the officer and delivered to the appropriate authority for acting on the resignation or declamation. The authority may not refuse to accept a resignation." So what's before you today is a formality, whereupon the city council formally accepts the resignation. It has to be set up as an action item, but it can't be voted nay under the terms of the statute. And that's, goes along next to court appeals, which states, "A resignation by a public official does not become effective until accepted by the proper authority." So that sets us up with the charter, a public proceeding from here on out. Under charter division three point oh six, the council then will have ten days from the date of acceptance, which will be today, and it's ten business days, to either appoint a new council member, or choose to hold a special election in which a new council member would be elected. Councilman Rodriguez was appointed on December thirteenth of last year, so technically, any appointment, because we only have one within a twelve-month period, cannot occur until at least, well, tomorrow would be Friday, so Saturday, if there were to be the earliest opportunity, but that's where the council will decide on how to receive someone.
Now, I feel that this is a different situation, because this was a court appointed and not a specific resignation, and, and I, you know, I kind of feel the, I mean, we're gonna be stepping on some, some feet, or even stepping into some legalities with us accepting this letter of resignation. So, and we're already beyond the ten days of his resignation, and, you know, if, if we're continuing to, to stay on this, on this track, that's just stating that we're not in compliance.
Well, I...
And what, what I would request, you know, to do is to table this item, and request a recommendation from the Secretary of State.
Okay, on, there's a couple of points on here, on this one. One, the, whatever happened behind that led to this resignation has no bearing on the city of Thorbsville. From the city's perspective, a letter of resignation was tendered, that's all there is on that one. Whatever comes out of that can be addressed later, but from the city's perspective, all that happened was a council member tendered their letter of resignation.
I'd rather not deal with the situation later, and...
And listen, I mean, I've contacted the DA's office to make sure that we were in compliance, and the response that I got from the DA's office was, "The letter of resignation should be handled as if any letter of resignation with the city of Thorbsville." And the agreement that Mr. Miller and the DA came to is an agreement with Mr. Miller and the DA, and does not bear any, anything on the city of Thorbsville on how we handle our resignation.
The letter received here is signed by Mr. Miller, that's dated and signed?
Yes, and it's dated November twenty-fifth, but under state law, until it's accepted by the authority, it's not an actual vacancy. And so what we have is, because it has to be accepted by the city council, this is the first opportunity, so the resignation will actually be effective today.
Under respect, the DA is, is not the Secretary of State that oversees the election process, the electoral procedures in the state of Texas. So I'm asking the council to, to table this item, and, and get the recommendation from the Secretary of State, carve a copy of everyone on the council, as well as the city manager, and, and get him the recommendation from, from the Secretary of State.
And all I can do is off the legal pen, that'll be a decision for the now.
And I appreciate your legal opinions, but I, I think that, that we need to go, get a little bit higher up, and, and get the recommendation from the Secretary of State.
The legal stand on your point, what is the right legal thing to accept? What's your, what's your opinion, and what is your opinion, Mr. Turner?
I, I have no opinion, other than...
And the legal opinion is under state law, the resignation isn't effective until it's accepted by the city council, and that's been upheld in court multiple times. And so the effective date would be today, and that would start all of the charter.
And again, I'm not saying that you're wrong, or, or right, I'm just, I'm just stating that we need a higher power to say that, that what we're doing is, is legit, and, and basically with, with their, with their blessings, we can go ahead and continue on, on with this process. And, you know, again, you know, this, the, the letter of resignation, there's a gray area, this states that, this letter of resignation is, was on the twenty-fifth, and, you know, it doesn't state anything on the charter that says that, that we need to accept his letter of resignation.
State law is what says that, and the, and the court's appeals have helped that.
Well, I was, I wanna hear that from the Secretary of State.
And the Secretary of State will give you an exact opinion of what they do?
The Secretary of State elections department can be contacted, whether or not they would rule on this, or whether or not they would say, "Go with what your legal says."
Because I've contacted them on so many things, that I say, "We can't really, we can kind of give you advice, but we, it's not really a opinion." On some, I don't, I'm not saying on this item. I, I think that the research has been done, and with the legal, I think it's, you know...
And, and again, I'm not, I'm not saying that legal is wrong, but I think that we do need to, to, to do just protocol, and, and, and get the recommendation from the Secretary of State. If we're, you know, again, we're, we're playing with the, with the voters here, and, and it's, you know, it's, it's, we, we get into legalities for somebody to come and say, "No, y'all are not in compliance, because, you know, it's already beyond the ten days, and, and they, and you didn't give anybody any time to, to, to hold a special election." We're not saying, and, and same thing for the other way around, you know, that, that you're not giving just time to, for the appointment as well.
And all the kids respect, let's say, is going back to elections code, today, this is the meeting, the council member has tendered the resignation, it has to be accepted today. Under the Texas election code, it has to be accepted today. There's no gray area that quoting it, "The authority may not refuse to accept a resignation." So that has to occur today. As far as everything else, pushing that out and going to the Secretary of State, you will run into issues of, it's gonna take the Secretary of State longer than ten days to get their response back.
Oh, that's definitely, but, you know, we're, we're also playing with that, that time already as it is.
Well, since the resignation isn't official until today, that ten days...
And they might even be official, it, it may be already official from his, his day of resignation.
Not under the elections code, and not under the rules of...
I know, I'm just asking for...
We're gonna go in circles on this, and then we're gonna go, he's making a motion, can I follow with a motion?
If the councilman wants to make a motion.
I'm making a motion to, to table the, the item until, until further information, and proper, proper direction from the Secretary of State.
Hey, do I have a second?
And again, it's for the...
Okay, motion is no, because don't have a second. Now, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the resignation of council place one, as per section three point oh six vacancies of the Thorbsville city charter.
Do I have a motion by Councilman Yedder? Do I have a second to accept the resignation?
Aye, sir.
Do I have a second by Councilman Lornes? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries forward. Okay, now let's go on to item, Secretary. Let's go on to item three D, the city council may consider, discuss, or take action regarding the first reading of Board N2013 dash zero zero one one, in reference to speed studies completed and speed limit changes warranted from those studies in the city limits of the city of Thorbsville.
Mayor, may I intervene a little bit?
Not even going back to the previous.
Okay, 'cause I, I have a, a question to counsel, because again, we're not in, if, if we're accepting this letter...
We're already on three B.
We're already past that, Eric.
Well, if we're accepting this letter of resignation, we're not in compliance, is the problem. We're, we're...
We're given legal advice to do so, and it's been voted on, and it's in vain. Okay, now, let's go to, this other untagged motion, y'all remember these are the speed limits that were changed on January one, by Texas Department of Labor by the city? So we need to have...
And, and I can explain, the first reading that we have, it was a suggestion by legal, so that we could make sure that the public knew that the city limits were changing, we'll bring it to a first reading at council tonight, we'll publish it in the newspaper next week, and then we'll bring it back to council next week on the nineteenth for the second reading. And that's for not, just for public knowledge.
Yeah, and we're doing three readings, because it's not necessarily a criminal ordinance, but it does have criminal implications, because it changes the speed limit, so it figures better safe to do the two readings.
Would that, can you explain that the speed limit was changed, so that the public know?
Yes, ma'am, what we're doing is one eighty-one north, the speed limit turns, changes to seventy right past Anseira Ford, right about Anseira Ford, and is seventy all the way out. What this will do is lower that speed limit to fifty-five all the way out past that stoplight over by Walmart. So it would go forty-five to sixty-five, it would not change to seventy until beyond that stoplight.
So it's gonna take us a while to get used to that, we're so used to going...
Yeah, and that's why we want to publish it properly, and make sure that it's brought up on the agenda multiple times, so that the public has knowledge that it's gonna be changed. And we will post those signs up, we'll get the text out, and have all of that done as quickly as possible once that's in place.
Ms. Turner, do you think that's something we can add to our water bill, is no?
Yeah, we do care, but that's what I kind of do right here.
Okay, can I have a motion?
We, we, for you guys to put on here, we did the way of reading the, the ordinance itself, through the Texas Department that we use, and we don't generally put a caption on it, so once I've broken the rule, this is how we've chosen to read it, because we follow the legality.
But then we don't need to take a vote either, because it has two readings, right?
Um, it has to accept the first, we, so that's, we'll all publish it, do the second.
Okay, you gonna read it, Jerry?
Where is it? Thorbsville, Texas, an engineering and traffic investigation has been made to determine the maximum reasonable and prudent speeds of the section of US one eighty-one from mile post nine point two five zero at the northwest city limits, southerly to mile post nine point ninety-five at approximately three thousand eight hundred eighty-eight feet south of northwest city limits for a total distance of point seven three five miles approximately. Whereas it has been determined by the engineer and traffic investigation that the maximum reasonable and prudent speed for this section of highway described as shown above, on the attached, and on the attached plans, which are hereby incorporated by reference, now therefore, the city of Thorbsville, Texas hereby ordering and fixes the maximum reasonable prudent speed limits as shown on the attached plans. And there is an attachment there where it shows mile marker to mile marker will be changing at fifty-five.
Okay, now can I have a motion?
Mayor, I'm reading the, the appropriation of the ordinance twenty thirteen dash zero zero one in reference to speed studies, the daily and speed limit change warrant, the all studies in the city limits of the city of Thorbsville.
Okay, may I have a second?
Aye, sir.
Do I have a motion by Councilman Guedro, and a second by Councilman Lornes? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries forward. So now we're gonna go on to item three C, and the city council may consider, discuss, and will take action regarding the ratification of an extension on the plumbing permit for Oscar Garcia at twenty-two twenty-ten Street.
Ms. Turner, any questions?
Uh, Jessica, this is from your dinner board, your last meeting prior to Thanksgiving, that we were not able to have on the public forum, is extended on your permit to give the preliminary approval to the board, that we would have hold up that job, comply with everything in reference to our permitting process, and what we're asking you to do is to approve the extension on that permitting process.
Ms. Turner, you can provide a reading, if you're willing.
Well, I'm still waiting for the application for the one, um, of the plans. But can you extend it on that permit?
I make a motion to roll with three C, the plumbing permit for Oscar Garcia at twenty-two twenty, twenty-two twenty...
You haven't received a plan yet? You haven't received a plan yet?
What happened was, the, the old permit, the, the previous plumber removed himself in September, so he didn't have any later replays that I could have.
I have a motion to accept, do I have a second?
Aye, sir.
Do I have a motion by Councilman Lornes? Second by Councilman Guedro? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we're gonna go on to item three D, the city council may consider, discuss, and will take action regarding the replat of lots sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and any addition, as shown in the plot of record involving the page five forty-seven of the plot of records of Wilson County, Texas, into one lot.
Uh, so you have, so, welcome back, Senator Yedder, and, and, yeah. What it is, is a replat, what they're doing is they're replating four existing lots into one lot, so that they can build a six thousand square foot building at that lot. What they want to do is, it's part of the St. Vincent de Paul society, they want to do all kinds of, they're gonna have classes there, they want to do food pantry, and other activities there, is what they're planning on doing. The replat is necessary, what they're wanting to do is, they want to remove those houses by the removal demolition, there's been talk on both, but essentially, that's what we're doing at this point, this replat for one lot. The PNC did approve it on October seventeenth, however, they approved the plat, the replat that they meet all the conditions that Mr. Hymer, the engineer, had put on October seventeen, two thousand thirty p.m. Y'all have a question? Y'all have a question?
Were they given a timetable, I guess, on this board, and all the conditions that Mr. Hymer put in?
Yes, uh, they have to go by the timetable that's, um, uh, allocated on the ordinance, so they're getting some of the things.
Do you have any questions, Mr. and Mrs.?
So, so two houses, one that's facing your church and one right behind you, and it's not in effect. There's another house to the left, right, and a front facing the church, I think.
Sure, um...
Only two, just the two. One facing trail and one facing, um, oak.
The lots that they're combining, uh, it's, it comes, it comes as trail, oak, and pecan street. I think I can get a site, a site plan in those brackets. It's gonna come out to point forty-one when they come by the mall. Almost happening.
Thank you, can I have a motion? Anyone else have any questions?
This doesn't, uh, cause any hazard of parking or anything?
Well, that's what the variance was due, when they signed, well, that's what it pops out. But this is just refiling the four lots into one lot.
Mayor, I'm going to read to, um, three block, lots sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen on the addition as shown on the plot of record bottom five, page five forty-seven of the flat of record of Wilson County, Texas, into one lot.
Do I have a, uh, motion by Councilman Guedo, may I have a second?
Second motion.
Second by Councilman Nieto, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Now we're gonna go on to Item 3E. City Council may consider discuss and or take action regarding two variance applications at ten oh six Trail Street. The variance is a request for a three-foot setback facing Oak Street and a front foot side yard setback as shown in the site plan with variance application. The variance is necessary for a new community building to be placed at blocks sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. The second application is a variance requesting for maneuvering off-street parking space at ten oh six Trail Street where parking will be facing both Oak and Pecan Streets respectively.
Again, the variance is necessary for a possible six thousand square foot building for multiple uses such as classrooms, offices, and St. Vincent de Paul food pantry. Because the zoning is under R1, which is residential, the setback requirements are ten-foot minimum side yard setbacks, and the setbacks are met on the trail of Pecan Street frontage. However, the setbacks are shown to be twenty-two, twenty-two feet off Oak Street, and it needs to be twenty-five, so that's only with a three-foot. The five, the five is off the side lot line, that needs to be ten-foot, but they only have five feet there. Um, it's under section, zoning section's code one fifty-three oh three one, and, um, the PNC did approve the setback variance on the number six. It was voted, uh, unanimously five to zero. And the second variance request is for street parking. Uh, Mr. Hymer did send an email recommending that a variance was, uh, to submit a variance because there are gonna be twenty parking spaces. They do need the parking spaces required for that building, for that residential area, um, which is twenty-five. However, there's gonna be twenty spaces that are gonna utilize Oak and Pecan Streets. So that's gonna be a lot of maneuvering in those two streets. So as such, a variance should be requested according to section one fifty-three oh five one, which will allow the use of the adjacent streets for parking space and maneuvering that would be associated with this project. You have any questions from that?
Does the Council find any one?
Uh, according to the ordinance, it does not require to go to planning zone, it goes straight to off, for the parking.
Can you explain why?
I, that's the way the ordinance is written, I don't know why they did that. But the setbacks, the setbacks were approved. The setbacks, it does require for the ver, uh, to go through the planning and zoning, but the parking, it's, uh, it clearly says City Council.
Can I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the variance and request for a three inch, uh, three-foot setback facing Oak Street and a five-foot side yard setback as shown on the site plan with variance application. The variance is necessary for a new community building to be placed at lot number sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. The second application is a variance request for maneuvering off-street parking spaces at lot ten oh six Trail Street where parking will be facing both Oak and Pecan Streets respectively.
Do I have a motion by Councilman Nieto, second by Councilman Lornes, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs.. Now we're gonna go on to Item 3E. The City Council may consider discuss and or take action regarding the amendment to the municipal solid waste collection and disposive contract.
Uh, this is actually an item we've kind of been discussing through budget process, um, in April with, uh, the ISB meeting requesting to change it with the place. On September twenty-sixth, we briefed you, we gave you this at a presentation, um, on the amendment. There are actually two parts, we have one item, this is the amendment to the contract, and then we have another item, the next one is a ordinance based on rates, which are two separate items, although they're both on related to the track. Um, the amendment that we have in front of you and it's in your packet, there's five, five changes to the contract. The four of them are really just housekeeping and making. The very first one is related to commercial carts, the, the first for commercial. The original contract was silent on the second cart, if someone has a second cart, and so unfortunately, the rate is twenty dollars instead of a differential. Since we have a residential, if you have one cart and then you have a second cart, there's a different rate structure. So what we did was we asked Ally if they could give us that same differential for second carts, and that's what this is doing, having their contract to us, which is not what goes to the customer. Their contract to us for the additional cart would go from twenty dollars down to seven dollars if you push that. So that is, uh, number one in the contract amendment. Uh, number two, the amendment is about the Florisville Community Center. In our original contract with Ally, the original contract lists out all of the city facilities that receive a free dumpster. This one was just left off at the time. They, we did, in back in February, remove it from our bill, and Ally removed it from our bill, but we need to, contractually, it needs to be included, so this is just fixing that item. Uh, number, I'm gonna skip to number four for a moment. Number four is about commercial dumpsters. Again, the original contract didn't have all the options of two yards on the fourth line for weed, two yards times five, three yard, four, et cetera, going down. So this is just giving additional options for commercial dumpsters, additional weeds. So this will be allow us to offer that, and we do have a few that are getting that rate when they're paying, directly what we're paying Ally, so we're not, we don't have any charges right now. And number five is the Florisville ISB, they had asked us back in April if they could opt out of the contract, or opt out of paying through the city to get a better rate because they have, uh, through the co-op. And right now with the co-op, it happens to be Ally that works for the public that is, is through that co-op, and it works for, um, the same company. We can't just say, sure, City of, uh, excuse me, ISB, you can opt out forever. So this is just amendment within the contract for us to allow the ISB to go through the co-op with Ally. If the co-op changes to ISI, then it's no longer, because we have an exclusive franchise for trash services within the city. And so, if that wouldn't work, so say that co-op, our deal is another company with that co-op, then the ISB would have to come back to us as long as we're with Ally, or whoever would be our press service, that made perfect sense. Um, again, so we, we couldn't just say yes back in April, beginning of April, when they asked if we needed to be part of the amendment. Um, and then I'm gonna jump back up to number three. We talked about this a little bit in September, um, at the meeting. This is just an option, right now it's, we've talked about bulky waste. Currently, we don't offer that to the citizens of bulky waste at curb side. We offer trash, I mean, excuse me, uh, tree service, we pick up brush that the customers can pay for through utility billing. We still have our Saturday service where you can take bulk, like, uh, couches, that type of items. This was just an option for right now, because this is not, this amendment's not rehashing our contract. This is not going back into the contract with Ally, it's only making this amendment. This would allow customers to contact Ally to have bulk picked up at their curb. They would handle it for us, we would not be involved in that, it just gives customers an option. Right now, we, there really, there isn't unless they call.
Would they contact the game directly or us, and then we...
They would contact one directly, we're, we're not getting it, it's not, yeah, it's just being an option.
So they would do that, yes.
They would, that's right, yes, so it would become part of our bill.
Describe bulk. Describe, as, as big as.
Because couches, can you, can they keep refrigerators, are you allowed to pick up?
You can pick up a refrigerator, they've been, the three on the release, and they have a picker on the same, so, yeah. Uh, bulk couches, mattresses, things like that, um, same thing you take the sort of that.
And the other reason, you know, the other reason for letting them handle it is that they can tell the customer what they can put out versus our, our utility, trying to get into the nature of what needs, what they can do. And they can also, again, talks about it being bulk in a yard.
You pretty much trade it's kind of like the cloth, like, maybe it's...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's a, that's a one set price, whether you're a senior citizen or...
Yeah, it, it's just, just done as a emergency type thing for your customer. There's, there's customers that are moving out of their houses and fixing things up, and they're, if they don't wanna shove everything into that ninety-six gallon car, they can call us and we'll try and help them out.
Or they don't have a way to get to our dump.
Correct.
Um, it, it just, again, we, we're really not trying to rehash our contract if that worked out, because we still have three more years, which is just something to help out a little bit.
There's four things you said, and everything was a gift from us, so I'll cut that. Everything, everything is here. Remember, that's our ticket.
Any questions? Or, or especially, do you have any questions to run?
Are you still gonna touch on the scenarios, or?
That's the next item, and like I said, they're both trash related, but they're really two separate items.
Okay, then can I have a motion?
Which is a motion to approve the amendment.
Mayor, I'm going to approve the amendment to the solid waste collection as shown in the contract.
Do I have a motion by Councilman Guedo, and a second by Councilman Lornes, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay, now we're gonna go on to the last item, which is Item 3G. The City Council may consider discuss and or take action regarding an ordinance amended Chapter fifty-one, solid waste collection, Section point four one, schedule of monthly charges, City of Florisville, Texas relating to Title V, Public Works Code of Ordinances, providing for savings clause and revealing conclusive ordinances for resolutions.
Okay, this item's a little bit more complicated. Um, this item, um, again, we did briefly talk about it, um, during some of the audit committee meetings. Again, we, about how some of our rates and our ordinances are not in conjunction and compliance, they're equally billing, they're, it runs a gamble. Um, what we have here tonight is an ordinance to correct all of the rates from residential down to commercial. We have, um, I did, four, excuse me, uh, there's really, there's four scenarios, but one of them is just to show the CPI increase, that's, that has already been passed on as of October first for our contract. So as of October first, if you, we have the four pages, the five pages alone sheet, um, and again, we talked about this in September, the, with the CPI increase, if we don't do anything, and say we, and the council doesn't make any decisions, the way all of our ordinances, and there's a variety of ordinances, two oh seven, two oh eight, because we're not all done as one ordinance, and we're pieces done at different times. If we, if you, if the council just does nothing, we are going to lose forty-five thousand dollars towards revenue that is gonna go into the general fund. Based, based on the current rates of the CPI increase, the ordinance and the way utility billing is, it will go into this one. So obviously, we have to make some decisions. So there's the scenarios, so we did, that we talked about on the twenty-sixth in September, we have A, B, and C. We can do others, if you want me to keep tweaking, we can try. But all of the scenarios, decrease residential customers, their bill would go down to two dollars and seventy-six cents based on the three scenarios. Commercial rates, depending on the, uh, policy cards or dumpsters, would be going up. Currently, there are customers, commercial customers, that are paying less than what we pay out. Didn't come from Ally, this was occurring even with ISI, but this is not based on the contract. This has been an ongoing issue. And it was not a comment, uh, so this is one of the items we are addressing.
Who are talking about the, they can...
The commercial residential, I mean, excuse me, the commercial dumpsters.
How are they going down?
Well, if you went with scenario A, um, that would put the average speed for the city at twenty-one percent. So it depends on where the, where the customer hauls. The very last page of scenarios, I mean, it goes, shows the dumpsters, and at the very top, it shows how many have, how many customers have each size. So we have seventeen customers that have a two yard at one time a week. For scenario A, the customer would see an increase of sixteen dollars and twenty-seven cents. For scenario B, nineteen dollars and seventy-four cents. Scenario C, twenty-two dollars and thirty-two cents. Again, you kind, you have to kind of go across, so again, we have eighteen customers have a three yard one time. We have four yard, again, thirty-nine customers have a four yard, and they're all, they're... You know, I could go on and read all of these rates. There is, because of how the ordinance and the charges we're currently charging, there's not a, just, can't just say a five percent increase. The scenario A actually brings up basically very much with what we currently have budgeted and the CPI increase. Scenario B would increase what we budgeted in revenues, about twenty-three thousand. Scenario C would be thirty-seven thousand. We, we're already three months into the year. We're gonna have a CPI increase for next year's budget. Scenario B would probably help in the fact that we might not have to pass that anyways.
And scenario C would pretty much...
Exactly, exactly. I mean, and, and again, when we get to that, we can negotiate with them, we could work another year in our contract. At this point, we still have three more years.
And so you can, like, free gifts, like brush pickup, get free gifts, like, on rate.
Well, again, this is not because of them, this is, this is our, our side. It's because of our, our budgeted revenue and our current raising system.
Mr. and Mrs. Have any ready to hear, please, and what's your recommendation?
Yes, I would do this with Laura, and, and, um, we, she had about four more of the scenario. But one thing that's key is that the residential did not go up. So all scenarios are inside, again, that the residential contract would not be effective. One question you asked me earlier tonight, Mayor, was what are the utilities going to, what, what to do? And this is what we need to be able to monitor very closely. And just for education to know, that we have, we can build...
And just for education to know, that we have, we've been billed according to contract, but our ordinance did not, what we are being charged. We have to be able to balance that with some borrowed money on garbage contracts, and we should not lose money on garbage. And so that's what we need to be able to do. And all fairness, we have, and you took it, the painstaking time to figure out which customer gets affected, whether it gets picked up every day, five days a week, where you have other customers that only get picked up once or twice. You are asking at the rate you're doing now, or subsidizing big companies like Walmart and Burger, we do not need to be in that business. I would recommend that you look at scenario C, because we need to be able to definitely, if this contract's rolling, you have other, to be able to get ahead of the game and be able to, uh, all the benefits we can to revenue. However, scenario C, B is probably as well, but we cannot do a break even, we have to be able to make money.
Okay, Lauren, you said if we went to scenario C, we would not see an increase in April for the commercial, or we're still looking at an increase?
I, if you were to see, based on, unless CPI goes crazy through the roof, I think scenario C, when the CPI comes back around next year, which will hit on October first, we will not have to pass that off.
Will not.
Repeat that?
In October, we have, we have every year, like, the contract, we have a CPI increase for the contract that comes, um, from Ally, they, they give us what the CPI increases. If we, if you go with scenario C, with a CPI increase, if it comes around October, I think you would be able to, you would eat this, this revenue, you wouldn't have this revenue according to the general fund. The additional revenue would then go towards the CPI.
And there is also a key that will happen is that, because we're gonna be able to monitor there, that the building cycle will happen, so we're not gonna be billed for, regardless of what they have, Ally is billing us for what we're receiving. We need to probably be able to make sure that the building, as it, for what they're using. Now, a lot of secondary and third poly carts are not being charged to the customers, to them, but we're being charged. And so that's why it's really important for us to have a part-time, you build in the